Good evening. I would like to call this meeting of Monday, September 11th, 2023, to order. Roll call, Kate?
Kathleen Amrell.
Here.
Chris Oliver. Bess Coughlin.
Here.
John Noons.
Yep.
Shannon Jenkins.
Here.
Thank you, everyone. Chris is unable to be here for a family matter, so I ask that we please stand, if able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask that you please remain standing for a moment of silence to honor those we lost on September 11th, 22 years ago. Thank you. Please be seated. So, first thing on our agenda this evening is public comment, but before I open public comment, I would just like to quickly revisit our standing policy, because you know I went rogue last meeting, and I've spent time looking into this. So, as it's been brought up before, the standing policy on public comment, which is found on our district's website under the school committee label, it's BEDH. It affirms the school committee's desire for the community to attend meetings and for the quote "opportunity to hear wishes and ideas of the public." Our policy goes on to specify the parameters that public comment must be limited to those items listed on the school committee meeting agenda for that evening. And so I know I have an obligation to ensure effective and efficient business meetings, and you know, this policy does provide a path to do that. I would just ask, no dialogue right now, but I would just ask for our consideration to revisit this standing policy, perhaps with, as I've been doing my research, we have a lot of policies that need to be updated, just consideration to revisit it, perhaps with other policies to improve our practice for engaging with the community. I personally, what was up for my, you know, what I defined as, you know, I have issue with the particular item on the agenda, other matters that may not have been anticipated at the agenda posting, which, as you saw me loosely interpret that last meeting, I just want to make sure that we're consistent. And so at any rate, I just want to, with that said, I don't know if anyone wants to say anything now, or Mr. Noons?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. All I will say to that, to your comment there, I'm not sure, I plead ignorance as to who's on the policy subcommittee, but just be very careful, because you own it.
Yeah.
And I'll get into that later, if necessary, but you've got to be very careful.
Yeah.
When you have public comment.
Yeah.
Type of deal, so.
Thank you. I'm even thinking, actually, one more statement. I was actually thinking, as the superintendent, sort of, I'm thinking of engaging with the community, it might not even be that policy, but the practice of, I know you're going to be out in the community meeting with, and we could probably list the top concerns, whether or not they're in our purview to discuss or matters of our business meeting, that's a different discussion, but, you know, bringing to us the concerns of the committee is important.
So, I would agree with Mr. Noons. I mean, I think any discussion of that has to go through the policy committee, but I am deeply concerned about issues that come in public comment that are not the purview of the school committee. By limiting it to the agenda, right, we are in fact saying, these are things that are the purview of the school committee, and therefore appropriate, but there are, we know, things that are not appropriate for us as a school committee to be engaged in. And so I worry about opening up the public comment. I feel like some of the off-agenda comments of the previous meeting were not the purview of the school committee, and were in fact an issue to be raised with building administration and the superintendent.
End of the department chair.
I certainly think that the public has the right to, you know, sort of request of the school committee that an item be added to the agenda, and we can certainly, you know, listen to public comment, or concern if they convey to us via email they'd like something to be on the agenda, but by controlling the agenda and controlling a comment to the agenda, it allows us to sort of limit the scope of what public comment is to things that are appropriate to our purview.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay.
To be effective and efficient, that's what I dug up in the language. Thank you. So with that said, we have allotted 10 minutes for public comments from the audience on any topic of this evening's agenda, so step on up if you are so inclined, and please state your name. Don't all run. Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have, actually, we have the approval of minutes. We have the regular session minutes of August 21st.
So moved.
Second.
We have Mr. Noons moved, second by Bess Coughlin. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
It seems as if the next item on our agenda, which is student representative report, might be a little behind schedule, which is fine, we can just move ahead, and when our new student representative is able to join us, apparently she is just finishing up practicing from band, so that's completely understandable. So we'll just move that down on the agenda. So the next item is the consent agenda.
Great, and we have some fundraising requests for the School Music Association, Dartmouth School Music Association, permission to participate in Bands of America Regional Championship, and permission to participate in Bands of America National Championship, as well as other fundraising requests. I think we have Amy Dion here, who can come up and speak to all the amazing.
And Mr. Flynn's here.
And Mr. Flynn, please feel free to come on up. Let us know all the stuff you have in store, fun.
Would you like to lead? So we are, DSMA is requesting approval for the fundraising, and then for the entire, you know, year, and for all that the music department needs to assist in their needs.
So basically, it looks like it takes you from September right through to early May.
Yes.
You have a series of fundraisers that are set up really clear, probably you've done these in the past, I'm.
Correct. Yeah, they're pretty much all routinely, there's a few extra that are new. For instance, the Parent Night Out is a new one for this year.
Excellent.
Whereas all the others are sort of, they've been in place and established. It worked really well.
Do you have any questions from the committee, or?
So I just always like to make public how much work that you all do in fundraising. So can you tell us just ballpark, like not exact dollars, how much you raise annually from these fundraisers, or you expect to raise? In the ballpark is fine. I think it's important for the public to know how much work you do and how much money you raise.
I would say it exceeds $50,000. I mean, well over.
Well, no. Twice.
That's just from these, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, even from the.
Gillette.
But the call phone was over almost $40,000 last year.
Well, right, right, right.
I mean, it exceeds $100,000 easily.
It's $100,000.
And upwards of $120,000.
Perfect.
Yes.
Thank you. Excellent.
Hard to imagine, yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot. Great.
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Excellent.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
That's the fundraisers, by the way.
We'll do fundraisers.
Oh, I apologize.
Yeah, and then we'll, now we'll do the field trips.
Field trips.
Yep.
I'll move approval for the field trips to the Grand Nationals and the regional tournaments.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Good luck.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
And good luck.
Okay.
So, next, we have Old Business. Discussion and agreement of final proposed charges for the Towns Indigenous People History and Culture Committee is next on our agenda.
And so I just want to remind everybody that even for me, it's been quite a lesson in learning this has been so important to this community, and I know so much work has been done around it. And at the last meeting, what came up is the idea that there needed to be some language that needed to be tightened up, tweaked, changed, and I think that was done. I know there's a working committee that meets on a regular basis in order to do that, and Kathleen, and Ross, and Katie, I know, were all involved in that working group. Well, Katie and Ross are involved in the working group, but Kathleen, you had taken some of their revisions, and used some of your revisions, and incorporated both, and then forwarded them to the school committee for their approval. So I think that's where we are. Katie and Ross are both here this evening. If you have any questions, they're happy to come up and talk with you.
What's the pleasure of the committee? Do you have any questions? Would you like, perhaps, go ahead.
I just have one question. I'm fine with this, but again, the language that I'm looking at says, per the town charter, members shall be residents of the town of Dartmouth. There was some debate about that at the last meeting, about whether it was in the charter or the bylaws, because that's a distinction that matters in terms of how we change that. And then, too, I thought the decision was that everyone would just be members, not that we would require all members to be residents of the town of Dartmouth.
Mm-hmm.
That's just more of a question. It may be that there was some research done about that, and that's what we have per the bylaws, but I'm just curious about that.
I see Ross and Katie making their way to that microphone.
Sorry. I'm making everyone get up.
No, thank you.
So I can't speak for the last part of your question with the, the first part, it was clarified at our last working meeting by the town administrator, Mr. McGinnis, that it was in fact a town bylaw and the charter, and so I think it was forwarded to Mrs. Genthner, who forwarded on that correction was made to reflect that part of it. Also, I think.
So we're looking at the draft updated charge, not the one that came from an email, because there's some differences there.
Yeah.
Right? Because the one that, this, the draft says that per town bylaw, all voting members shall be residents of the town of Dartmouth, and I thought the discussion was that it was not going to be a voting committee.
Right.
That's how I remember, I'm just asking. That's what I remember that we had talked about.
I would have to pull up, because my, but you are correct. There was some, Mr. Noons, you were going to say something else?
Yeah, no, I mean, the only thing I'm thinking, you know, in that vein, Dr. Jenkins, is, you know, they're going to, I would think that they're going to be a voting committee in the sense that they're going to vote X to X, you know, so many favors, so many opposed, to forward this wherever it's got to go. Okay, back to us, back to the board of selectment, the town meeting, wherever it has to go, but it's, you know, kind of like the finance committee, you know, they sit there and they take their votes, that's all I'm thinking.
So I will say then, if we're looking at the draft updated language, it says, per town bylaw, all voting members shall be residents of Dartmouth. The third bullet then says, the town may invite non-voting participation by New England-based Indigenous people, and I believe we were supposed to say.
Yeah.
Shall there, shall, not may. So that, I'm just a little confused about which language, because Kathleen, you had sent us a, there was an email that we have in our materials, and that has the shall partner language.
Yeah, I think what had happened was, there was a, the committee was very diligent, and they met that day, that next morning, before we woke up. I don't know. Sorry, trying to be funny. But, and so I had sent some language, Ross had sent draft on the, you know, the draft template, and then I just said, give it all to them. You know, I, so I think that we both were working at the same time.
Yeah, so I think that is exactly what took place. They were kind of like ships passing in the night. You were very efficient and had already drafted language to address the school committee's concerns, and at our working group meeting, all we did was clean up the bylaw question, and then I believe there was a question about how long terms were, and terms were spelled out for some and not others, so we cleaned that up to just say three years for all of those members that were enlisted. And other than that, I think, you know, and again, I can't speak for everyone, but I think the impression I have from our working group meeting was that whatever changes are made by the school committee, that they would be taken back to the select board and that they would probably be adopted at that point, because really what we're looking to do is just, you know, begin the work in earnest and move forward, again, in a partnership kind of form, so.
Yeah. So, and I'm trying to open my documents, and I'm having no luck.
What do you need to look at?
No, I was just going to refresh my memory, but.
Yeah, I would just like to see that third bullet to say the committee shall invite. It requires the committee to do that, and it says invite. It doesn't say they shall participate, they shall invite.
Right.
And so long as the invitation is extended to local or national organizations of Indigenous people, it's up to them whether they respond affirmatively or not to that invitation, but we should always be inviting. It should be required. So I would like to, hopefully, if we're okay with that, changing that may to shall in that third bullet.
Yeah. Okay. That sounds good. So. Go ahead.
You want a motion to approve it with that change?
With that change.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll make a motion that we approve the general purpose and cultural committee charge and such with that one change in the bullet three that says the committee delete may and add shall.
Thank you, Mr. Noons.
Invite non-voting participation.
My second half.
Any further discussion? Dr. Jenkins?
So I'm not going to hold this up any longer. I've had my say. The ship has sailed. I just want to register for the record. I do object that our non-Indigenous tribal neighbors will be non-voting members of this committee, right? And I want to see this committee's work continue, but I, as I've had conversations with other people in the town, people with whom I disagreed on the logo vote about, right, I think the symbolism is important, and that just bothers me.
Thank you. Ms. Noons?
But to go back to what you're saying, and I understand what you're saying, that goes back to the discussion I had with Mr. Tattlebaum, is trying to get that bylaw changed at a town meeting.
We can do that at some point. That's good. And, you know, the other option is, we've talked about, you know, this could be pursued as an official intergovernmental relations committee, where the tribal representatives selected by the tribe come to the table as equals with members of this community. Both of those are avenues. I don't want to delay this any longer, so, I mean, I recognize that we're going to move forward, but I, but I hope we continue to consider how we can work in full partnership with our tribal neighbors.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. I do agree with that. So, so we have, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? I don't know if it's, we all did separate sort of, or in addition to what you're, what you've mentioned, not as, well, there was someone who, in town, that had contacted us, who has been in touch with Mr. Tattlebaum. I don't know, I didn't check with him to see the update on that, but at least there's that, but at any rate, so I guess we're ready for a vote on. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Put that one to bed.
For that. Okay. And so next on our, under Old Business, we have an update on Fields and Facilities Subcommittee Meeting regarding the capital improvement, long-term capital improvement planning.
So Jim Kylie isn't here this evening, but we did come together as a subgroup. Jim's part of a larger group at the town level, looking at long-term capital planning, and thankfully, it sounds to him like, to me, from him, that he's really excited about being involved with this group, and that there's real promise in the outcome for some of this work, particularly with planning for our schools. And so we had met in a subcommittee meeting on August 29th. Terry, I see you're here back there, right? Terry Ham, myself, Kathleen, and Chris Oliver had met. Were you there?
Yeah, I was there.
John?
I was there instead.
Oh, yeah, that's what, I don't know why I was confused about that, but.
That's okay.
Thank you, because you have the presentation, so, and John. So, you know, some of what we talked about was really being serious as a group about the reality of the build, the condition of the school buildings in Dartmouth, and they are so well-kept. You have great folks here that are facilities people, doing really good work. But some of what Jim had put together for us was just an overview of the years that the schools were built, and the Cushman School was built in 1922, the most recent school built, and it was Dartmouth High School, 2002. So he did the average out, so the average age of the schools with the high school, with the new high school that's 20 years old, is 64, and 64 years. And without the high school included, the average age of the school buildings is 72. So, John, I don't know, I know you have the presentation in front of you as well, if you want to jump in anywhere. I was just going to highlight a couple things that have been done regarding the condition of the buildings. We know that the Mass School Building Authority has been in the district in the past. They have rated the buildings, and there are ratings anywhere from, they rate buildings one from the, to the best, to four to the worst. And our, the buildings here in Dartmouth are a range, and Jim did point out that even though some of the ratings might look a little bit stronger, that there's some question as to how MSBA had tiered those ratings, given some of what he knows at the state level, where they've approved school buildings to be rebuilt with ratings that sometimes were like a one or a two. And so, again, ratings are really clear. You did have Facilities Master of Facilities Plan done back in 2017, and from everything that I've heard from anybody involved, they weren't completely pleased with the outcome of that, of that planning. There were certainly some recommendations made, but none that seemed to really spark the interest of the school community or the community at large. So again, being new here, I'd like to hear from you, John, because you have this in front of you too, and, you know, that was interesting for me to hear from, and that was from Jim Kylie, and several other people who said that they didn't feel like they came away from that with enough to really be able to talk about what future planning should look like, but we do have ideas.
You know, thank you, Dr. Saban McGuire. You know, one of the things that Mr. Kylie gave us, when he gave us this, you know, this nice printout type of deal, is, you know, things that are projects that, you know, we have to think about for consideration. And again, from what I understand, the town is looking like for a 30-year capital improvement project type of deal. So, I mean, if you take a step back for a second, you know, 30 years from now, the Cushman School's 130 years old, 131 years old, you know, the high school's going to be, you know, 20, is going to be 50 years, and everything else in between, you know, is going to be almost 100 years old, you know, between DeMello and Potter. So, you know, there's a lot of things that we have to look at. You know, MSBA right now is not doing a lot, type of deal. Twofold, number one, they don't have the money, number two, even though they get 1% from the sales tax, just the cost of doing these projects has gone skyrocketing, you know, and I'm being facetious when you go buy, you know, if you went to buy a two-by-four a few years ago, it was probably $2, and now it's $10. So, you know, extrapolate all of that out. One of, you know, some of the things that, you know, he looked at, you know, a middle school replacement, DeMello-Potter-Quinn replacement. You know, this building, you know, we've talked about it, Mr. Kylie's talked about it, needs a new roof. We're talking about, you know, high school, you know, stadium renovations. You know, in 30 years, this building's going to need a lot of renovations. Athletic field, HVAC stuff, you know. Now, do we sit here, you know, as we talked about, and do we say, okay, do we want to restructure if, you know, do we want to restructure our grades? You know, do we want to look at, and again, please, everybody's going to start jumping on a bandwagon here, do we want a K to four, a five to eight, and a nine to 12, or do we want something different? So that's, you know, those are all the things that we have to look at, and it's not something that we're going to do that quickly. This is something that's going to take some time. The other problem that I happen to mention at that is, at that meeting, is where do we build it? Because we're, you know, kind of land poor in this town, type of deal. You know, you know, we talk about being facilities poor for, you know, our athletic events, and even, you know, the boys and girls, DIAA, D-GAL, things of that nature. We don't have enough facilities for them to be able to have fullborn in the wintertime, you know, fields to practice, or, you know, gymnasiums to practice in, and things of that nature. So, you know, where are we going to go? You know, what's our, what are we going to prioritize? You know, do we make the middle school a priority? Well, you know, can we close, you know, are we going to build an elementary school? Okay. Can we close one, you know, move those students, you know, kind of redistrict those students for a couple of years, raise that building, and put another one on that footprint? You know, do we have enough, is there enough room there for MSBA to say, yes, you can do something of that nature? Because remember, we've, and, you know, how long's it going to take us to get on an MSBA approval list? I mean, I know, I just happened to see it today, that Fall River, one of their schools has finally gotten approved to do windows and things of that nature, or one of their schools that they've been fighting for since 19. So, you know, on an, you know, accelerated repair type of deal. So, that's, that was my takeaway from it.
And I think the other thing that I, that was important is that it's not just about the schools, we're part of the larger town plan, and I think that being connected in that way is going to be important.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, one of the things they've talked about, that they're talking about is, you know, the wastewater treatment plant. You know, there's, there's talk about Hawthorne Country Club, you know, putting senior housing, etc., you know, over 55 housing there. Well, now they got a problem, because they don't have enough capacity at the wastewater treatment plant, you know. Do they have enough ability to tap, you know, all the wells to get the water into it? It's a lot that's got to go into all of this.
And to Dr. Saban McGuire's point, you mentioned that Jim shared, I was at that meeting as well, and he shared with us, you know, he did a lot of research, he went through meeting minutes of all these different municipalities and all of their planning, and what he came out with, it was the, you know, couldn't figure out the rhyme or reason to some of the, of the funding of these projects, and he ultimately, you know, his synopsis is that there really was none, except for perhaps those districts that got funding, were ready to go, and so that we, as a community, he suggested that we not rely necessarily on the MSBA funding as our wait-to-see, but move forward with planning around what we want to see the best outcome be for buildings in this district, for our learners and our educators, and get all of our ducks in a row with this planning process, so that we then potentially would have a better chance.
Almost have them, what they call shovel-ready.
Right.
To go.
Right. Is anyone else? Dr. Jenkins?
So I'll just say, I was at, I think, maybe you were at the 2017 meeting.
I was.
I think you were not there. You were not well.
No, I was, no, I was recuperating.
You were recup, yes, you were.
So, I mean, I can remember, I think, part of this, and this is one of the things that people need to be made aware of, public construction is very expensive. The numbers I saw on yours were 50 to 80 in 2017 dollars.
Yeah.
Right? So, and those were, you know, one middle school, one elementary school, a couple 50 to 80, right? So now we're looking well above that, probably double that, right? You know, now, given inflation and time, and then the time to when we're actually going to be ready to go. So I think people have to be aware of that all of these buildings, by the time we get around to it, we'll be back around to this one, so, right, that we're in, all of them, we're going to need to be part of that plan, and it's not going to be cheap. It's not. That is the nature of public construction. And so I think people have to, we have to start talking about numbers and dollars to really get people really get people, because I think I nearly had a heart attack in 2017. Hearing those numbers then, they're going to be way higher. And that's, can be a difficult sell here, so we need to start having the conversation, just sort of repeatedly as we plan, about what we're talking about in terms of cost.
Yeah, I mean, I, I went to look for that report, you know, in my archives of stuff, and I didn't have it. I was, okay. And then again, I knew I wasn't at that meeting.
Right, yeah.
And that, but Mr. Kylie had sent it to us, and I opened it up, and it was 200 and somewhat pages, and I was like, no, I'm not printing, you know, no. So, but, it is.
I mean, it was a very thorough evaluation of our buildings.
Yeah, it was, but it is just, it's interesting.
It's a lot of money, and you're saying 50 to 60, but you need to say 50 to 60 million.
Yeah.
Oh, and it's not going to be 50 to 60.
I know, I know, but we can't just say 50 or 60. We have to explain.
It's not going to be 50 to 60.
You have to spell it out every time we talk about it, because when you say 50 to 60, it doesn't sound as much as when we say.
Million, right?
Yeah, oh, no.
Millions.
You know.
Yeah.
It's a reality.
And we're going to have to look at that point in time also, as to, you know, what's going to be the reimbursement rate from MSBA, type of deal. I mean, unfortunately, in my opinion, does it become feasible and cost-effective? So, I mean, because we're up in the, you know, 50%, and maybe we can squeeze a little bit more on, you know, on the schools, if we go with what they call a model school. You know, the blueprints, the, you know, it's a standard set of blueprints, and you make a couple of adjustments, so they don't have to pay a lot, reimburse you a ton of money for the blueprints. So, they give you a little bit more, but, you know, will it work with what we need? So. But that was an, it was an excellent meeting.
Yes.
It was, yeah.
Terry, thank you for being there.
Terry's back, yeah, thank you, Terry.
She was there, not officially representing the committee, but she was there as a right Terryal disclosure.
Yeah, I think that that's a really important point, though, that this is part of a town effort.
Yeah.
And we're part of something bigger than, not just the schools, but the schools. And where do the schools fit into that, I think is going to be critical.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for that. Great.
Great, now I get to talk about the start of school. So, as, you know, some of you, I see we have some teachers here in the audience tonight. Thank you so much for coming out after your, I know it was such a difficult week last week, and especially toward the end of the week. So, we appreciate you. But we did have a great start to the school year. And the convocation was exciting. I want to say that the energy that the educators brought, and I just have to, again, thank everybody for the welcome I received, because it was truly moving for me. Thank you, Kathleen, said, had some words for our educators. I thought that that was really important. John was there to, again, to represent the school committee. Obviously, everybody can't be there, and that's completely understandable, but I think it's important to show school committee support on a day like a convocation, where, you know, we are all coming together. I want to say that, at this point, we are still registering students, not, not a lot, a few, you know, it always happens, every year. But for the most part, we feel that our approximate, we have about 3,350 students, will remain constant, and we'll send that updated report to you, so you can have an idea of what that looks like this year, as opposed to this time last year. Jim, Kylie, John Burnett, his team, remarkable job preparing schools. I mean, a couple days before school opened, I see a big hole in the ground outside one of the schools, and I'm in a panic, and John just says, don't worry about it. That's not, you're never going to know that was even there, in two days. And he was right. Again, I'm just so impressed with their level of commitment, willingness to go above and beyond all the time, and I truly mean that. I see above and beyond all the time. Again, you've, I know you've seen the buses rolling, hopefully you haven't been stuck behind them. But it seems to me, and from what I'm hearing from Jim and Lauren Pucey, did a wonderful job. The first day of school was almost like magical, because the buses literally, and I can't, I don't even have to knock on wood anymore, because it's, that part's done, like, they literally ran without a hitch. And so, that is such a relief for all of us, to get kids to school and home safely, that's usually, and to feed them lunch. That's usually our number-one priority for the first few days of school, and that went well. So, thanks to our folks at the, you know, who do our food services, too. So, we've met with our police department. We continue to communicate with them, work cooperatively to keep students safe. For example, we had, you know, the traffic officers had come to see us, and we immediately connected them with, with Mr. Rossi at the middle school. We were able to make like a small tweak that, for all intent and purposes, apparently really did relieve some of the traffic congestion out in front of town hall, and out in front of the middle school. So, that's been positive. Again, continuing to build those relationships, I think, are so, that's so important. The first few days visiting classrooms were just wonderful for me as an educator, but again, educators were ready to welcome their students back to school. We do have a couple of pictures that we're sharing with you, from all of our different schools, that were taken over the first few days of school. And I think that what you can see is, in, you know, without exaggeration, is that you see that the kids, there's joy there, and that's what we want in our classrooms. We want joyful learning. Now, I'm not going to say that's the way they looked on Thursday and Friday last week, because it was a little bit different. But they were still happy to be there. Like, what I saw were students and teachers who were doing their best to kind of get through those days, and knowing that there was, there was going to be an end to it, I think. Again, we have Renee and Jody here. I talked with both of them during that time, super supportive, and just making sure that we were doing what we could on our end. Our school leaders, I see Audra's sitting here, like, making sure all of our kids have water, had water, making sure they were taking those hydration breaks, keeping kids off the playground under the hot sun, things like that. Those are those small steps that we take in order to keep kids safe. And I know that there was concern out there. I know there was concern by staff and students. What I can assure you of is that we did have staff out in the buildings, checking classroom temperatures. We did that on a consistent basis. That doesn't mean we didn't have classrooms that were, like, unbearably stifling, because that did happen. And what we asked our school leaders to do, and I know they did, they offered other spaces. Unfortunately, there aren't a lot of air-conditioned spaces in the Dartmouth schools. And that goes back to the conversation we just had about capital improvement planning, and some conversations that we need to have, I think, moving forward, depending on what our plan is for the schools, in creating some more cooling spaces for, for our staff and our students. So, that was a concern, not something that I took lightly. I definitely stayed up at night thinking about it. I was worried about it. I want to thank, again, the, you know, the athletic, you know, Andy was great, Ian was great, the band having to cut back on some of those practices, and just kind of change our whole approach when that big game was looming, the band's first performance. But by all accounts, what I heard is that it was one of their best starts, and the football team won 40 to nothing. And I did see the girls varsity. I know you all know that. I mean, everybody, I was getting texts from even friends of mine, hey, good look, good for you, look at your football team. And I said, you should have seen the band. So, it was just really something to see. So, again, we did the best we could. And you know what? Today was muggy, too. I was in a building today, and it was muggy in that building. So, we're still not quite out of the woods yet. It's probably going to be toward the end of the week before we get some relief. As far as hiring is concerned, I just wanted to give you a quick update. We still have a few positions being open. One, and I know that Laurie Dinesio's here, one of our most important positions, is Assistant Director of Student Support Services. She's doing a terrific job, keeping it all together, and I'm very grateful to her. She does need that help. I mean, that has got to be something that we prioritize. We continue to look and advertise for people. We're in pretty good shape. Education support professionals, we need at all levels. That's one of our key positions in our schools. We know that those are people are the backbone of our schools, and we are definitely in need of folks. So, if you know anybody, please encourage them to apply. We have quite a few openings. Couple of food service workers, and we are always looking for substitute teachers. And that doesn't mean you have to substitute every day. That could mean one day a week, it could mean two. It could mean once a month, but we're always looking for substitute teachers. So, I want to thank Kate, because she was so busy doing all this work over the past few months in hiring. And I know I've said it before, but I'm really amazed at what she keeps track of for us in the school district, and gets everybody, and, and she's relentless about it. Relentless. And I mean that in a very kind and flattering way. So, schools, I just, again, you saw some of the pictures of the kids, exciting events. One of the things that I wanted to say to you about, when I looked at the football game, when I actually experienced the football, was more than football. It was more than the football game. It was the hype that came around it, and it lived up to its hype. It was really exciting to be there with all of these. What I loved about the way that evening was structured is that you included all facets of the community. You had your youngest cheerleaders, meeting with your vet, with your varsity, your JV cheerleaders, so they can start to see themselves in those roles as they grow up through the system. Your youngest football players, I mean, that was so fun to watch how excited the little ones were, running across the field, like, you know, they were the star athletes, and they should have felt that way. And the cheerleaders, there was a little, a couple little cheerleaders at the end that already could be on the varsity team, I could tell, like, they were exceptional. So, that, I thought, really stood, really just highlighted the community pride, and how important the schools are to this town. I think you can't underestimate it, because, I mean, it was clear that there was, I was sitting next to a gentleman in the stands, and I said, oh, do you have somebody in the band, cheerleader, football player? He said, oh, no, I'm just here to watch the game. He said, I always come, I'm a lifelong Dartmouth person, and I just wanted to come and watch the game. I said, oh, that's great. He said, well, I won't be here if it's 20 degrees. But he was, he was there, and I'm sure he wasn't the only one. And I think that's important to highlight in this community, how the schools really are critical. Again, the band, I'm hearing, I was saying to John earlier, the band was so spectacular. So, my husband came to the game, and he watched the band, and he said he didn't know where to look. He said, I didn't know where to look, there was just so much going on. I was first looking over here, and then this caught my attention, and he just, you know, and I felt the same way. But, of course, I was looking at everything that was going on, so I didn't know where to look either. Wasn't just the band, but it was just taking in the whole experience, because that's what it is. That was an experience. So, kudos to the town, to the schools. Again, every, but, like, when I looked around the stadium that night, there were teachers, there were lots of educators in the stands, people who were here, here or there, to support what was going on on the field, not just the football, but the, but every facet, the student group. I watched how the Ryan and, Mr. Shea and his team made sure that they had very strategically-placed adults who were school-based people, just to make sure, to monitor what was going on. So, I give them all so much credit. So, I'm excited. I'm, you know, other than the heat, things couldn't have gone better. And at least I showed that picture of my hair, because I was telling the truth, and I wanted people to know that. That's what it looked like Friday night. So, but it was, it's really great stuff. So, I'm excited to see, you know, what happened, what we have to come, because I'm hearing the band just morphs over time.
Yeah, yeah, incredible.
Yay, for the sports teams. The girls won, the volleyball, everybody won. Dartmouth was a winner. Like, it was just all win, win, win.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Great. So, next on the agenda, of course, is Report of the Chair. I just have one update in my report, or my update, is that I heard from Mary Waite, who is our school committee rep for the town's Charter Review Committee. And she had alerted me a while back that she, you know, she's teaching, and the meetings are called during the day, and so she's unable to, you know, you know, meet during the day. And so she reached back out to me, because Heidi convened the committee for the fall, for the first time, asking if we had appointed. And I thought, oh, goodness, no, I didn't really bring this up to the committee. So, I'm just bringing it to you, it's probably something we'll add to a future agenda, to talk about how we might want to promote the community interest, or somebody to represent the school committee, or one of us. I don't know at the time what she want, I can't do it.
I can't attend during the day.
Yeah, no.
At any rate, they are looking for a school committee representative to be part of the town's Charter Review Committee. So, that's the only update that I have, that we can put that on a future agenda, I had to talk more about as a committee. So, does anyone have any other updates?
I just want to say, related to that item, if we can, if we're going to talk about it, we should know when those meetings are scheduled for, because it's going to affect who's able, I mean, I, people work, people have jobs.
Yeah.
And I get people don't want to attend meetings in the evening, but it limits the sorts of people who are able to participate when we schedule meetings during working hours.
Right, exactly. Okay. Does anybody, Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Two things. Number one, Dr. Saban McGuire cadews on the way you handled, and your staff, and everyone handled the excessive heat and humidity last week. It was well done. Heard a lot of good comments on it, so, you know, personally, you know, that type of deal. You talked about the sports team, so that, took care of that, thank you. Seriously, you talked about the band. Their first competition is the 23rd in Black, September 23rd in Blackstone, up in Bellingham. Our home show is, US Band's home show is September 30th, starts at 6:00 PM. We're scheduled to be on at 9:15, with awards right after. And we've got 12 bands coming in that night, so should be a good, good turnout, all difference, all different sizes and numbers and everything else, so that'll be good. The tickets are $10 for adults and $8 for seniors and students. I don't have a lot on the Nesba show, which is the 14th of October. At the moment, there's 11 bands showed up, and they have us scheduled for, you know, starting at 5:00 and going on at 8:00, with awards right after, but that's a possibility that could change, as bands start to really formulate their season as it begins. So, that's what's going on there, and I will get an email out to everybody this week, for if you are available to, to help us out. So, that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Nunes.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Great.
Can I just check if Mr. Shea is still here? I didn't want to stop. Do we know if our student is going to be able to make it? Because I wouldn't.
Yeah, that thing the student was dealing with earlier in the week.
Okay. So, she's not going to be able to make it?
She's not going to be able to make it today.
That's fine, thank you.
Yep, no worries.
Thank you.
But, she's excellent, she's a band member, we're really excited, so, yeah.
We hope she feels better.
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. And so our next meeting of, our next regular meeting of the school committee is scheduled for Monday, September 25th, 2023, 6 o'clock, here in the Library Media Center. And.
Are we going to meet the new teachers that night?
Yes, we moved the new teachers to the next meeting.
That's fine.
Yep.
No, thank you for asking that and clarifying that, because that was a question that we had, but, yeah, moved to the 25th. So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. No roll call, right? I'm just trying to, I must forget about.